December the 11th and the time is 6 o'clock. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and a notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, our Board of Trustees will move to a closed meeting under the authority of the Texas Government Code Section 551-071 and 551-074. No formal action will be taken in this closed meeting. All right, back in a little bit. For our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. And Sergeant Joe Smith will begin our, will have our invocation. Sergeant, where are you? Is he up there? He's not a sergeant? Oh, that's right. One moment. Sir. Thank you, Sergeant Smith.
For those of you that need you, please bow your head. Dear Lord, be with us in our discussions and God our decisions so that we always do what is right and just and serve worthily those who rely on us to focus the vision, set the agenda, and ensure the viability of this noble institution. May our service bring you glory, you who are loving God and merciful Lord, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And from Taisinger, our pledge, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Give us your name. Tell us who you are.
My name is Chloe Frank, Chloe, and I'm in fifth grade from Taisinger Elementary.
All right. Thank you. Anne, go ahead.
My, my name is Lizbeth, and I, and I am a fifth grader, and I'm from Taisinger Elementary.
All right.
I am Riley, and I'm from, and I'm in fourth grade, and I'm from Taisinger Tiger Elementary.
Thank you so much. Great job. Thank you, thank you. Yes. And it is time now for our board moment. Is PTA here tonight? There she is.
Greetings to the board and Dr. Rivera. Mesquite ISD Council of PTAs is happy to give you an update on our current status. Out of 51 schools, we have one school, Cross Elementary, that is in the process of setting up their PTA. We have 28 schools that have reached good standing. We have 20 schools that are still working on it. And we have two schools that are in restructure that are working on setting up new foundations there. Our membership is currently set at about 3,700 members for the district. That is unfortunately about 27% lower than last year.
Oh.
So we have schools that are still doing membership drives, and we are still working on getting those numbers up.
Good. Well, appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, our board moment. I believe, Mr. Carbo, you wanted to say something?
Yes. Actually, we have a couple of things that Robert and I have been talking about. I'm going to start with Tasby. We had our quarterly meeting, and a couple of things came out of it. One thing is Tasby is setting up a new website.
What's Tasby?
Texas Association of School Boards.
There you go.
I apologize. I'm so used to calling them Tasby, and some of us, that's what we do. But the Texas Association of School Boards. I'm a director on that board. So they're coming out with a new website. And the idea of that website is it's going to be a lot easier for us to do some of the training that we do online and some of the research. All the resources that are needed are going to be there. With that, they're also changing their logo. It's not going to be the red and blue anymore. It's very different. And that is all going to come out in the first quarter of 2024. End of January, beginning of February. That's when they're going to reveal all that. So I thought I'd share that. We're starting our grassroots campaign. Our meeting for Region 10 is in February of 2024, and, well, is in January, January 10th of 2024. And we will be meeting in Garland. So I encourage you guys to show up if you can. They're very interesting. That's where we start our grassroots process to get our resolutions and our principles. And then Tasby also announced their 2023 Excellence Award winners. And Mesquite actually did win one of those excellence awards for their employee morale program in the transportation department that leads to safety and retention. So I was really proud as a Mesquite board member to be in that meeting when that was revealed, that we are, we're on the map. And as you know, we've received many risk management awards before, so receiving this one was very nice. And then I'll let you, Robert, go in, and I'll chime in on when we talk about strategic planning meetings.
Yeah. Kevin and I have had the privilege of, in the honor of serving on the committee of 50-some folks from our district, educators, teachers, counselors, directors, administrators, to start our strategic design planning. It's been a great number of years, about eight years since we did our initial strategic planning. And I'll tell you that the discussions in that room, coming from our teachers and everybody in there, they didn't hold back. In fact, we were very excited to hear some of the things we were hearing. There were some common themes throughout the meeting. The first two meetings were two full days of talking about the strategic design, and we talked about our beliefs, our beliefs came up with that, our final call to action. We drafted some goals that will be further refined at the next meeting in January, as well as action items to move forward as we do that. But I'll say that all the staff members that participated, I was very pleased and proud of the participation and the voices that we heard in that meeting. Mr. Carbo?
I'll echo your words. Actually, I was very impressed with the entire process. I think that the people that were there knew what the goal was, and, and it was, there was a lot of discussion. There was no bad idea, and that's the beauty of it. All ideas were welcome. They were very receptive, and we were able to accomplish the goals that we were looking for. So that was a very good meeting. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the coalition?
Robert and I had the, the honor of being in the Coalition for Education Funding Conference. And this was very interesting. We had State Representatives Gary Van Dever, Van Dever, I apologize, and James Talarico present to us some of the things that happened in legislation this year. Now, Van Dever is, is a Republican, Talarico is a Democrat, and they, they really showed how bipartisan partnerships work, because they were working very well together. And, and actually, they were part of the group that defeated vouchers in the House this year. I'm very pleased with them. I'm very pleased with what they had to say and what they did, because this was something good for public education. You, go ahead.
We had a number of speakers. We had Dr. Mike Moses, former Commissioner of Education. We had Zach Freeman, a concerned North Texas parent. I need to get that information out. He was a comedian. We didn't realize it until about a minute into it. And Dr. Fields also attended the meeting with us during that period. But a couple of things, there were some themes that ran through the whole thing with all these different speakers that were there. We had some superintendents, but one of the things that they pointed out was, it was 40 years ago today, or from this election period, that educators actually elected a governor, Mark White, about education. It all dealt with education. So what it says is, all the elections since, educators have not been participating in the primaries, which they all, through this process, every speaker talked about the importance of voting in the primary, because 90% of your candidates are elected in the primary, go on to win the November election. So we've got to get participation up in the primaries to speak towards supporting those that support public education. So they kept hounding that. One of the other items they talked about was none of the $33 billion surplus this last legislative period was spent on public education. Nothing. Zero. And that, that's a, that's a matter of concern to everybody, including the representatives that were there. So again, primaries. It's important that we get everybody registered to vote, and we get them out to participate.
Mr. Stewart, is Texas, is Texas a state that requires for to register as a Republican or Democrat?
No, sir.
No.
It does not.
No.
You can vote in either primary.
One of the other things we learned, because this was something they mentioned that resonated with me. We're part of a lot of boards, we're part of a lot of decision-making bodies, and one of the things that they were saying is, if you're not at the table, if you don't have a seat at the table, you're part of the menu, which means, guys, we have to be part of that decision-making body, or else we're the ones that are going to be served. Okay? We must continue partnering with our PTAs, with our teacher organizations, with our, with our churches. These are things that we have been doing, but now we have to do it stronger, and we have to have a presence in Austin, or they'll just enact laws and do whatever they want. And it's not always beneficial to us. So let's be part of it. That's all I have, Robert.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rose?
Friday before Thanksgiving, the Potteet High School here in Mesquite had their first annual Potteet Gives Day. They had approximately 400 high school students that participated in 20 or 25 various projects around the city, and a lot of the school clubs and students actually came up with the project themselves. Everything from doing lawn care for senior citizens, to helping out with food pantries, doing things around the school. Some of the cosmetology students even brought in some of the seniors that live at one of the care facilities around the corner and did, actually did make-upers for them, did their hair, did their makeup, and just made them, they had a really good time. And it was all spent that Friday, and they had a really good time doing it, made a big impact on our community, and it's hopefully something that we'll see grow as, as, as the years go on. But they had a really good time doing it. It was a very successful event.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, ma'am. With our winter break rapidly approaching, on behalf of Dr. Rivera, Mrs. Samples, and our Board of Trustees, we'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Whether you're staying in town for the holidays or you're traveling, we hope that you're safe, that you enjoy quality time with family, with good friends. We're thankful for the blessings that we have. And so again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And at this time, Dr. Rivera and, and Mrs. Samples and the remainder of the board will sing "All I Want for Christmas Is Going to Front Team."
No. Thank you, sir.
I've already said it.
I know, I know.
Sing it by yourself.
Yeah, you get to sing it by yourself. That's funny. Yeah. We'll let Ms. Jobe, yeah, we'll let Ms. Jobe take over from here.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Hold, give me just a minute.
While we're waiting for them to come in, over, probably about a week ago, I got to see Vanguard's Autotech kids compete in Skills USA. Those kids were spectacular. They came in, I watched them do professional level auto repair and auto body work, and they are 15, 16-year-olds. Guys, our kids are up to big stuff. It's good things.
And we're so glad you're here.
Good evening. I'm Carla Rodriguez. I teach orchestra over at Mesquite High School, and I am the director for Mariachi Estrellas de Mesquite as well, which is right here in front of you. This program, this is its third year as a program, and it includes students from all high schools. We have Mesquite High School, we have North Mesquite, as well as West Mesquite here with us today. And I would like to introduce you all to Mariachi Estrellas de Mesquite, but before they begin playing, I would like to thank every single one of you for inviting us out today. So without further ado, this is Mariachi Estrellas de Mesquite. Thank you.
Este amor apasionado anda todo el borrotado por volver. Voy camino a la locura y aunque todo me tortura sé querer. Nos dejamos hace tiempo pero me llegó el momento de perder. Tú tenías mucha razón, le hago caso al corazón y me muero por volver. Y volver, volver, volver. A tus brazos otra vez llegaré hasta donde estés. Yo sé perder, yo sé perder, quiero volver, volver, volver. Nos dejamos hace tiempo pero me llegó el momento de perder. Tú tenías mucha razón, le hago caso al corazón y me muero por volver. Y volver, volver, volver. A tus brazos otra vez llegaré hasta donde estés. Yo sé perder, yo sé perder, quiero volver, volver, volver. Me gusta cantarle al viento porque vuelan mis cantares. Si digo lo que yo siento por todos los lugares. Aquí vine porque vine a la feria de las flores. No hay cerro que se me empine ni huaco que se me atore. En mi caballo retinto he venido de muy lejos. Si traigo pistola al cinto y con ella doy consejos. Atravesé la montaña pa' venir a ver las flores. Y aquí hay una rosa uránea que es la flor de mis amores. Y aunque otro quiera cortarla yo la debi se primero. Y juro que derrancarla aunque tenga jardinero. Yo la de haber trasplantada en el huerto de mi casa. Y si sale el jardinero pos a ver, a ver qué pasa. Yo sé bien que estoy afuera pero el día que yo me muera sé que tendrás que llorar.
Llorar y llorar, llorar y llorar.
Dirás que no me quisiste pero vas a estar muy triste y así te me vas a quedar. Con dinero y sin dinero yo hago siempre lo que quiero y mi palabra es la ley. No tengo trono ni reina ni nadie en quien me comprenda pero sigo siendo el rey. Una piedra en el camino me enseñó que mi destino era rodar y rodar.
Rodar y rodar, rodar y rodar.
También me dijo un arriero que no hay que llegar primero pero hay que saber llegar. Con dinero y sin dinero yo hago siempre lo que quiero y mi palabra es la ley. No tengo trono ni reina ni nadie en quien me comprenda pero sigo siendo el rey.
Thank you all again.
Thank you all again so much for having us. Thank you for inviting us out here. I know they were very, very excited to perform for you all. Again, this is from all the high schools. Orchestra, choir, we have some band as well. So we obviously can't do it without the other programs as well. So thank you all again so much. Thank you, superintendents, thank you to the board. Thank you all so much for having us out.
Hey. Hey, y'all rocked it. Muy bien hecho.
Ms. Joe.
Now we'll continue with our recognitions for the evening. We are inducting two new Apple Corps teachers tonight. The first is Karen Sorato from Gentry Elementary School. She's a fourth grade bilingual teacher and has 17 years of experience here in MISD. And here's a little video about her.
Congratulations, Ms. Sorato, our 23-24 Apple Corps winner. Ms. Sorato is a facilitator of learning. Her students feel empowered to take academic risks and feel comfortable in their learning. Her students understand the power of education. She leads the campus by legal spelling B, is active in PTA, which consistently has over 150 members, is an E-Tip Campus Scholar, in which she leads the campus mentors and helps organize students to participate in the Hoar Hispanic Heritage Showcase each year. Congratulations, Ms. Sorato. We're all so proud of you and it couldn't be more deserving of course.
Teaching is important because through building relationships with my students, I get to build a lasting impact in their lives. It's the cornerstone for shaping future generations and promoting a well-informed, innovative society.
I'm gonna read a proclamation. Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD. And whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore, be it resolved, the board officially welcomes Karen Sorato to the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 11th day of December 2023. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is with great honor that I address you as a recipient of the Apple Corps Award. I am truly humbled by this recognition and feel an immense sense of privilege to be acknowledged by the peers, by my peers. I am aware that many among them are equally deserving, making this recognition all the more meaningful. I want to start off by thanking God because without him, I know nothing is possible. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to Dr. Rivera and the board. An immense amount of gratitude goes to my incredible students, past and present, that I have the pleasure of teaching. Their enthusiasm, curiosity, and dedication makes every day in the classroom a rewarding experience. A special thanks to my team, present and past, the amazing coworkers that I've had the blessing and pleasure of working with, including those who are no longer at Gentry. Each of you has left a mark on my journey and I am thankful for the shared experiences and collaboration. I also want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to the exceptional principals who have been instrumental in shaping and impacting my journey as a teacher. Mrs. Snow, Mr. Sanford, Mrs. Price, Dr. Hammett, Mr. Perotti, each one of you has played a pivotal role in fostering a supportive and enriching environment. I am fortunate to have had such inspiring leaders on this path. To my colleagues who have become cherished friends, there's not much I can say that fully captures the significance of your presence in my life. You know the unique and valuable role each of you plays. I'm grateful for the bonds we formed. Thank you for being an integral part of my professional and personal growth. Lastly, but certainly not least, I want to express an immense amount of gratitude to my family, to my parents, whose sacrifices and commitment to instilling the importance of education have been a guiding light. A special thank you to my sister, who has spent countless hours helping me set up classrooms, and my two nieces, you are a special source of inspiration. Thank you.
Ms. Sorato, would you like to have people stand?
That's right.
Yeah. If you're... Family, yes. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Okay, our second Apple Corps teacher that's getting inducted tonight is Christian Hernandez from Perrung Elementary School, a music teacher with eight years of experience and all of those in Mesquite. And so here is a little video about him.
Mr. Hernandez differentiates his instruction to make sure students get music education in his class each day. He uses a variety of active learning strategies to motivate students and to create active participation in his classroom. Mr. Hernandez is not afraid to try new things to address his students' needs. Something he is doing this year is implementing stations in his room, which allows students to experiment with a variety of instruments in a way that allows students to take ownership of their learning. I am honored to welcome Mr. Hernandez to the Mesquite Apple Corps. Congratulations, Mr. Hernandez.
I've been very blessed to have so many great teachers in my life within Mesquite, ISD, and beyond. Those teachers are unforgettable for me, based on the impact that they've had upon my life. That's something I really hope that me as a teacher today, that I can leave upon the kiddos that have been in my classroom. I know this profession is difficult, but I also know that God has put me here at my campus for a reason. And that's all I need in order to do the best I can for my campus.
He missed it. He broke it.
I broke it. So it reads, "Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD. And whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition. Therefore, be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Christian Hernandez into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 11th day of December 2023." Congratulations.
Good evening to everyone, and I just wanted to extend my appreciation once again for this, you know, recognition. And tonight, the people I brought here with me, my son, Eliseo, my daughter, Evelyn, my eldest, Emma, my sister, Angela, my brother, Paul, my mom, and my dad. Person I couldn't make it tonight was my wife, she ended up having to work. But yeah, as I said in the video, everything that I, you know, am today is because of the teachers that I've had throughout my life, beginning with my mom and my dad, teaching me, I guess, the education of just life, values, morals, things that I'm not, you know, necessarily learning at school all the time. And, I mean, I remember Ms. Hornsby being my principal at Hodges Elementary. So it's crazy just seeing a lot of the teachers that I had, I guess they're, like I was telling Mr. Odom, they're an inspiration for me to just keep on going. Some specific ones just off the top of my head are Mr. Hutchison in middle school, Coach Biggert in high school, Ms. Baker, Ms. Johnston, Ms. Bowman, I mean, the list goes on and on. But I was very fortunate, I've been very blessed, and I'm glad I'm being able to give back the gift of music to my community. And yeah, just want to be an advocate to do the right thing. Movie that I was actually watching about a week ago, I guess, was It's a Wonderful Life, you know, the classic. And I really do believe the message that it sends out to people. I think it's one of the best movies created, period, just because of its time, but every life brings something to this world and we have a purpose and we touch other people, even though if we don't even know it. And I guess I'll end with a good song to hear, Michael Jackson's Heal the World. So thank you again.
Family, stand up and be recognized. Come on, you guys, stand up so we can see his family. Thank you so much.
Well, each month, we also recognize one of our outstanding paraprofessional employees, and tonight is no exception. I would like to invite Principal Brandy Lewis forward, and she is going to tell us a little bit about Beatrice tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, board, Dr. Rivera. It's great to be here. It's so easy to talk about Mrs. Delion. She is an amazing person. When I was asked to speak about her, the first word that came to my mind was dedication. Ms. Delion is a dedicated Mesquite employee. She arrives early and we have to tell her to leave, it's time to go home. And not only has she dedicated her bilingual teachers that she serves, but the students and staff at Shands Elementary, she is truly a dedicated individual. Next is positivity. If you need, if you're in one of those bad moods or you're just in a yucky kind of way, you can go find Ms. Delion and I guarantee you, you will leave her presence with a smile on your face. She just has that effect on people. It's wonderful to have at your school. And finally, Beatrice is what I like to call a kid whisperer. You've heard the show The Dog Whisperer, and he like gets naughty dogs in on the order and their families are happy again. Well, Ms. Delion is a kid whisperer. Any kid, I've never seen it fail. If they're having a bad day, they just might need to spend five to 10 minutes with Ms. Delion, and they've turned it around. She is a wonderful asset to not only Shands Elementary, but Mesquite ISD. So she is a wonderful recipient of this award.
Knocked over the microphone.
All right, now it's time to recognize our community partner of the month, and we believe we have a video to tell you about their work with Replay Talk.
This month, we are recognizing the Mesquite Fire Department as our featured Replay Talk community partner.
I had some experience in going into the school, seeing the kids' faces light up as we read, as we just said hi to them, gave them a high five. I also wanted to reach every school, so I know that we go to certain campuses, but I wanted to be able to reach every single campus.
This school year, the Mesquite Fire Department is visiting our elementary campuses in Mesquite and reading to our students.
That's kind of been my goal. My short term was try to get into every school, and then long term was have this really good fire safety education, that we can build a good partnership with y'all. Not just going and reading at the schools, but also teaching them fire safety.
Thank you to the Mesquite Fire Department for supporting our students in Mesquite ISD.
And now it's time to recognize some of our students this evening. We're going to begin with some National Junior Honor Society presidents from our middle schools. From Woolley Middle School, we have James Valente Gómez, and he is the National Junior Honor Society president. His sponsor here is Jana Harrison as well. And our next student is the National Junior Honor Society president from Terry Middle School. This is Oloa Shimulare Ogunie. And now the following students were selected as winners of MISD's Christmas Card Contest. The contest was open to all elementary students, and these were chosen as having the best designs. First, I'm sorry, first place from third grade, Delaney Mesa from McWater Elementary. Her art teacher is here with her tonight, Ms. Melody Stokesbury. Dr. Rivera, I believe we have something up there for our winners on the table. It's very important. And for those of you who don't know what it is, this is a cube trophy that has all of the winner's artwork on the sides. Get to keep that. It's pretty neat. So each of our winners gets one of those. All right, in second place, we have Allison Correo from McWater Elementary, and Ms. Stokesbury is also her art teacher, so go ahead. And the third place winner in our Christmas Card Contest from Tosh Elementary is Ariadne Rodriguez Ramos. And her sponsor with her this evening is Jennifer Pond from Tosh. And our last... And our last bit of recognition this evening is, it's a video that recognizes the middle school one-act play winners. These students performed exceptionally well and placed or were named to All-Star Cast in multiple categories.
Congratulations to these students, and at this time, we'll take about a five-minute break. Thank you.
How did they get through?
This is an action item, our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
One approved.
Kevin Carbo and a second by Greg Everett. Is there any discussion? All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. All right. Ms. Joe, is there anyone speak to the board? Thank you. All right. Moving on to our effectiveness report, there's no action items, or there's no anything that we're going to deal with personnel, so our effectiveness reports.
Okay, good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Rivera. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with an update on the state of Section 504 in Mesquite ISD. While you've been provided with annual reports, it's been a few years since we gave a board report, and we made a lot of changes since then. I'm Kristy Davis, the Director of Counseling, and we also have Amanda Carroll, our 504 Coordinator here tonight. So if you're not familiar with the purpose of Section 504, it requires that school districts provide a free, appropriate public education to qualified students in their jurisdiction who have a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities. It is often referred to as leveling the playing field for students with disabilities to those without identified disabilities. It also serves as a protection for students with disabilities, ensuring that they are not discriminated against and have access to all programs and activities. We serve students across the district with learning disabilities, health concerns, and mental health diagnoses. And through Section 504, students receive classroom and campus accommodations, testing accommodations on local and state exams. In the 2223 school year, we identified over 4,000 504 students up from 2,600 just a few years ago. And as you can see in the graph on the screen, about 25% of our students receive services through either Section 504 or through special education. So, some challenges and celebrations in the last two years. Some of our challenges, 504 is a very large unfunded mandate, meaning we must provide services for students, we must provide assistance devices, we must educate and equip personnel, we have to have software to maintain and communicate student needs and accommodations as needed, but we're not giving any funding to actually carry out those requirements. Therefore, we must rely on the local budget to meet these needs. In the last several years, we've seen an increase in 504 students with a mental health diagnosis. And going back to the unfunded mandate, we have little, very little in the way to address some of those needs outside of what's available to all students. The last challenge we experienced is the lack of guidance and clarity from TEA and the federal government. We have to provide these services, but little information is provided to districts about what that actually looks like, other than we have to identify students. We have to reevaluate eligible students every three years and provide accommodations as needed. So we're left to rely on being up to date on judgments from court cases and then the Office of Civil Rights, or OCR, to guide our practices. So some of our celebrations, in Mesquite ISD, we believe a reeval every three years is not best practice, so we choose to every single year, look at every student in 504. We adjusted the process due to time constraints on our campuses, so students who are being successful get what we call an annual snapshot, where we look over their data and their accommodations between the three-year reevals. Students who are struggling in any area, academic, medical, social, emotional, or attendance, will get a reevaluation every year. And because we go above and beyond the minimum requirement, we are able to provide what's best for students while still meeting the letter of the law. In Mesquite ISD, we've also chosen to follow the same timelines as SpED with regards to new referrals. This ensures our students and their families receive very prompt service when needs arise. Our 504 department also works very closely with our SpED department and our response to intervention, or RTI procedures, ensuring a seamless process for all new referrals. In 2022, we also added the position of our 504 Coordinator. We split it with another position called our Elementary Counseling Coordinator, and while it's not a fully dedicated position, it does allow for campus support and frequent audits of the campuses, and these campus audits help us make sure that our 504 process is being followed with fidelity, and that all of our students are receiving the services needed in that suggested timeline. So OCR enforces Section 504, and they want to know, do you have a process, and was that process followed? We have an amazing process around 504, and our auditing and accountability process ensures that the process is followed for every student. In 2022, we also transitioned to a share the wealth model, where before, the burden of Section 504 and all of the meetings and paperwork associated with it rested solely on the campus counselor. As the number of identified students grew, it was unmanageable, and it prevented the campus counselors from fulfilling their role as a counselor. We have identified staff in each area to serve as case managers for their 504 students because we view them as the expert in that area. So nurses serve as case managers for 504 students with medical impairments, counselors are the case managers for students with a mental health diagnosis, and instructional staff serve as the case manager for students with academic disabilities. It took the typical caseload of 80-plus students for the campus counselors to manageable caseloads of less than 15 for most staff, and in some cases, less than 10. It also allows someone who's an expert in that area to best advocate for the individual student needs. Something else we added in 2022 was the position of support personnel. The amount of paperwork required of campus staff was becoming unmanageable and was a heavy burden to already full plates. When we moved to the case manager model, we knew that by spreading this work to nurses and instructional staff as case managers, they were having a lot added to their work. The support personnel are 12 retired or former educators, and they have knowledge of the 504 process and the educational system. They do all of the pre-meeting and post-meeting paperwork, they check to make sure campuses are informed, have what they need, and stay in compliance. They work 18 hours a week remotely, saving the district money and the budget for full-time salaries. And in '22 to '23, they save campus staff 4,943 hours of paperwork, which is equivalent to about four full-time staff working 40 hours a week just on paperwork alone with those part-time employees. In your board report for 504, SpED and dyslexia were included, so you probably saw this, but last year, we began referring students for dyslexia testing through SpED instead of 504. You can already see the dramatic reduction this caused in students K through 2 identified as 504 students last year. As 504 students in grades 3 through 5 with dyslexia are now referred to SpED, we expect that trend to continue over the next two years. As students finish MTA, which is the dyslexia therapy in middle school, they'll return to 504 if they are in need of classroom or testing accommodations due to their dyslexia. So it'll be interesting to see how those numbers work out over the next few years and how they change, identify changes in which grade levels are most affected. I'm very proud of Mesquite, and speaking with 504 leaders in other districts, we are very ahead of the implementation of these changes. I know it's been really hard on SpED, but we're in great shape with this transition, and we're not going to feel the same pressure that some districts are going to feel at the end of the 2520 school, the 2025 school year, when that has to be complete. So looking to the future, we have a few goals for our program. We'd like to continue to provide annual meetings and evaluations to every 504 student because we feel that this best meets the needs of our students. We would like to continue to set a high standard of service provided to our 504 students and their families. 504 is a difficult system to navigate, and they should be able to rely on us to navigate it for them. We understand a lot is asked of campus staff, and so we continue to try to find new ways to lighten the load and the burden of paperwork so that the quality of direct service to our students does not suffer. We hope that at some point, we'll be able to maintain a full-time employees that can do the paperwork and run all campus meetings so that staff only attends and gives input. This would protect the amount of time they lose doing 504 case manager duties in addition to their regular position. We would like at some point to add a full-time 504 facilitator. When we added it, combined with the Elementary Counseling Coordinator, we didn't know how much time it would take, and it turns out, it's a lot. And a full-time staff member dedicated to help support campuses, oversee all trainings, audits, answer staff and parent questions, and facilitate the 504 process with fidelity would help our program and our students. Our attention to detail with 504 processes and procedures has saved the district time and money because we're able to solve any concerns about 504 at the campus level before it's escalated to OCR. And that's all I have for our district 504 report. So, any questions?
Very time-consuming, but we appreciate what you guys do.
For sure.
Thank you so much.
Of course, absolutely. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Yay. Okay. All right, we have an action item. We're going to change the date of the January board meeting to Tuesday, January the night. The reason that we're doing this is because that's the first day students come back, and so we would like students to be recognized at the board meeting because they darn sure aren't going to come on a Monday night when that's their last day of vacation. So, yes, this is an action item. Okay. My Greg Everett and a second by Robert Seward. Is there any discussion, guys? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all right. The elect the candidate to Dallas Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. This is also an action item. Mr. Seward, will you tell us who this is? Who the person that we're going to elect?
Sandra Phillips. She's on Mesquite ISD, board currently served on the appraisal district. But I did have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I think Mr. Prado and I have talked about this going forward. I don't recall getting the information for us to consider nominating anybody from our district. So I'm a little concerned that all of a sudden, we get this letter that there's one nominee. We didn't have a chance as a district or other districts around to consider nominating somebody from our district or another district. Do you know what may have occurred on that? Notice, period?
I do not.
Do you? I don't think, I don't recall getting this in the last several months. I know that you and I have talked about, we want to start looking at this and maybe have some input in the future.
Without knowing.
So then don't do it.
I don't even feel comfortable nominating somebody.
Yeah, I don't either.
Or supporting anyone personally.
Yeah.
But we don't, we don't have to vote for it.
So just say, no, thank you.
I'm sorry?
We just say, no, thank you. I mean, it's a polite way to say it. Just no, thank you. It's an action item.
But you don't have to take action.
Yeah. The action is to support the person if we decide.
She's a nice lady and everything, but I think that we're missing the process issue here because now she's going to be on that board. We only have one opportunity every three years. And this needs to be set in our policy that we make sure we follow up and find out when the notice is supposed to go out to all the districts. I think the appraisal district messed up, we didn't get that notice.
True.
So we're only allowed one, one person from Mesquite, I mean, from any of the school districts in Dallas County, other than Dallas County, they get an automatic one.
I mean, it says if we choose to abstain from voting, we can just, we can do that by the 15.
In other words, we are not.
So we're not obligated to do this.
We're not obligated to.
That would be my recommendation.
Take action.
That's my recommendation, just because the process, I don't believe, was followed. Nothing against Ms. Phillips, it's just the process.
She's the only candidate, right?
Yes.
All she needs is one. I know, but I didn't get that. But the process prior to them getting this letter was not given to us.
That's true. That we could nominate someone.
This was already done. Okay.
So then recommend.
Yes.
So what do you recommend?
Make a motion, abstention.
Abstention. That is on the floor of.
Make a motion that we abstain.
We abstain. All right, is there a second?
I'll take it.
Okay. Mr. Seward, okay. Any other discussion?
We did.
Yeah.
Do what?
Yeah, we did it right. We're getting thumbs up.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Okay, and the next one is a discussion of the district-wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings.
It's been in a red folder for two years, Mr. Bingham. Good evening, y'all know why I'm here. We are still conducting, or TEA is still conducting intruder audits in all of our campuses. We've had several since our last board meeting, they're going well. And so anytime we ever have findings, we address those at the campus level, additional training is done, and then we talk to the safety and security, district safety and security team about those findings and next steps. So hopefully, we don't ever have to address those things, and if we do, we don't do it very often, but that's why I'm here today. And the red folder is okay.
It's a discussion. Okay, it's just a report, yes, yes. Okay, a report about pre-K expansion.
Another red folder.
Another red folder. I just chose the color that was on top in the pile, so there's no thought there. All right, so I'm here to talk to you about a 10-year pre-K expansion plan.
Oh, my.
Yes, oh my, for sure. We have, we have planned out 10 years, but I'm really only going to go in depth in the first one, so just so you know, okay. So, go ahead and let you know what our goals are for this work. Our goals are to expand pre-K seats to be able to serve 100% of the estimated eligible 3- and 4-year-old population by 2034, strategically distribute these seat allocations to serve 100% of our special education and bilingual students, and to increase our pre-K seat fill rate to 97%. We currently sit at 91. I want to remind you that to be, the reason why you'll hear the word eligible a whole lot is because pre-K is not just open for everyone, you qualify for it. And currently, right now, we don't have enough seats for the students who are eligible in our district. So I'm going to remind you what eligible means. Means you are unable to speak and comprehend the English language, you are educationally disadvantaged, you're homeless, you're the child of an active-duty member of the Armed Forces of the United States, the child of a member of the Armed Forces of the United States who was injured or killed while serving in active duty, is or has ever been in the conservatorship of the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, and is the child of a person eligible for the Star of Texas Award as a police officer, firefighter, or ENT, and they would know that by their honorary letter. So just wanted to give you a quick reminder of that. So I'm going to start with the kind of the state of where we are right now with pre-K. So here we go. Over the past decade, Mesquite ISD has served an average of only 26% of the estimated eligible, again, there's that word, 3- and 4-year-old population. That's an average over the past few years. Currently, we are sitting at 34%. We are, for regional context, Mesquite ISD has the lowest percentage of eligible. We are, for regional context, Mesquite ISD has the lowest percentage of eligible students enrolled in pre-K in Dallas County. And we rank 52 out of 61 for the five surrounding counties. Of our 72 sections, Mesquite ISD pre-K has a 91% fill rate, which is actually the highest in the county. So when we have open seats, we fill them at high rates. But only one out of 34 of our current campuses, elementary campuses, have enough seats to serve the total estimated eligible population. So we lack, we have some space concerns. 19 campuses are considered top priority for pre-K expansion, meaning they need more than four new sections to serve the estimated eligible population. And this is kind of a heat map of sorts. You've already seen one heat map tonight. Here's another. And showing you where our biggest needs are. So why pre-K? Now let's make the case for pre-K. So an analysis of student-level data from 2017 to 2023 shows that students who attend pre-K in Mesquite ISD are more likely to have positive outcomes, such as they have, they come to school more often. They stay in the district. They start with us and stay with us. They have higher rates of meeting the requirements on math and reading. And they have persevered more and are outscoring others on STAR post-COVID. So let's look at that data. This is our 2017, 2018, and 2019 cohort of prekers, so we've been following them. And what this graph tells you is that the students who attended pre-K have less absences pretty significantly than students who did not. This graph shows you that students who attended pre-K are also significantly more likely to remain in an MISD school year over year from kindergarten to third grade. Students who attended pre-K outperformed students who did not attend on end-of-year MAP math assessments. That's what we're currently using to measure growth for math across all grades K through 3. So you can see that on those two graphs, past two years. And this trend holds true across all demographics with significant gains noted in our emergent bilingual population who attended pre-K. In Spring '22, students who attended pre-K outperformed students who did not on the end-of-year AMIRA reading assessments, which is what we currently report growth measure progress for you, to you, I'm sorry, on grades K through 3. And again, this trend holds true, although we don't see as large of a gap in RLA. Does hold true for our MISD emergent bilingual population, with students who did not attend pre-K reducing these gaps in the second and third grade. So we're catching up a little bit there. And then the data point that I think is strongest, besides retention and attendance, that's number one there, is that in 2023, our third-grade students who attended pre-K outperformed those who did not on both STAR reading and math by 10 percentage points. So I think we can make a pretty strong case for pre-K. This last one is, this trend holds true across our key demographic groups, with students who attended pre-K being more likely to meet standards than those who did not. So what are we considering and what are some of the strategies we're looking at? The first is building capacity. And we're going to go deeper on all of these. We've got to have the space, and we've got to figure out where it's most needed. Pre-K partnership classrooms, we have two of those currently with CP Prep and Frog Academy. We would need to do some expansion or look at different ways. Our different program offerings, the district-level staff, and our nonprofit support. So you've seen this already once. This is why I bring up building capacity. You see that some of our campuses need four classrooms and some need less than one. So we have to prioritize space. To do that, we had to know where space was. So back earlier in the school year, we completed space audits on all of our elementary campuses. Marked in a heat map-type style, again, on this graph, green means we probably have space on those campuses to add what we need to add. The dark red, those would be campuses where we see space as a major limitation. For our pre-K partnership classrooms, this is another opportunity. The reason why pre-K partnerships have worked well for us is currently, our pre-K programs don't have wraparound services. Our pre-K partnerships afford some parents who need early care and late care to have that option. So we would need to either expand those partnerships or look at other ways to meet that need across the district. Currently, the breakdown for these ideally would be 60% pre-K 4 and 40% pre-K 3 when we get to 100%. Really important to notice is that, or to note, is that pre-K 4 is mandated full day by the state but funded part-time, half-day. So we're already at a deficit when we bring these students to school. Pre-K 3 can be full day or half-day, but is only funded half-day. Those things are important to note. So ideally, at the end, we would like for 80% of our, this is, you know, the overall 10-year goal, of our pre-K 3 sessions to be full year, to be full day. And 10 to 20 would be half-day, just again, to meet demands and needs of our parents based on childcare possibilities. And then we want, at the end of all of this right now, to remain current with where our bilingual population is. Currently, that's around 30%. So we would always want to make sure that we have 30% of our classrooms are bilingual, again, to meet the need. A lot of this from year 1 to 10 requires that we remain really fluid and keep data every year to make sure that the next year, when we make decisions, we're making the decisions that are best informed by the needs of our students and the space where we have it on campuses. One of the other things we really want to see decrease as we enroll more and more prekers is the amount of bilingual students we are moving from school to school because of space. We would like to see students get to attend school in their home campus, in their neighborhood. So that is another thing we will look at and really keep in mind as we work through this. And it looks like I lost a slide. Did I? I did. Okay. No, I didn't. This is staff. So our current MISD pre-K staff is myself. I go to the district-level meetings with Commit, servicing our teachers, our 72 teachers on campuses. And our two daycares is Jean Priceur. She is the pre-K facilitator. She coaches all teachers, leads their PL, and is responsible for all content, written curriculum. So she has a big, heavy lift on her plate. We would also need to continue the work with our nonprofit partnerships. Commit is a huge part of the partnership and a huge part of the data that you see tonight. They have, we have really strategized and worked together to put this presentation together. Groundworks DFW is a group, a nonprofit group that Commit introduced us to that really helps us knock on doors and talk to our parents and get them involved and get them to get their kids enrolled. I actually sent them out last year and asked them to go find out why our parents aren't enrolling their kids in pre-K because we were at a 91% fill rate. And they came back and they said, it's not that your parents don't trust you. They all say, we don't know what your program has to offer. So we learned a valuable lesson about what now we need to go out and make sure our parents know. We need to continue our partnerships with Dallas College and other instructional programs to build those teacher pathways. And then Commit also helps us with marketing, and they, we have a partnership with them and through, with another company through them to market when it comes time for enrollment to really beef up. So here is the expansion plan overview. In order to meet the ambitious goal of being able to serve 100% of the eligible population, we recommend a data-backed action plan that includes expansion every other year. So we would include massive expansion in year 1, year 3, year 5. A lot of that is to see what comes from legislation. Campus expansions, which could include adding on to renovating, getting creative with where students are placed in the campus. Again, that bilingual program audit, we've got to know where the kids are and where the needs are so we can meet the appropriate needs. Updating the district staffing model to better support our current and expanded pre-K population. We need to increase our community and nonprofit partnerships to support continued analysis, enrollment, staffing, and quality efforts. And then, of course, all of this, as I told you, has to remain fluid. The continuous planned progress monitoring, including space and quality of program audits, has to continue. So we have mapped out years 1 through 5 and year 6 through 10. So we have rough estimate goals of where we would like to be. We're going to focus today on year 1, okay? Because year 10 is a little ways away. And again, we're going to remain really fluid. The allocation of 16 new sections of pre-K across eight campuses for next year. A full audit, and once we've done that and all that's in place, we're going to do another full audit of bilingual pre-K and K5 offerings to make sure our kits were reducing, again, that transfer from campus to campus and that we're serving more of our students in pre-K. We will continue with space audits on campuses for strategic planning. We will, again, establish and strengthen some of our strategic partnerships. And we will ensure district-level personnel in place to handle the expansion and the current need. At the end of the first year, the progress towards our 100% should be 46% of the estimated eligible 3- and 4-year-old population are in, which is a 12% increase from where we sit right now. Our year-one overview at this moment does include these campuses. They do not know this yet. So if they're watching, if you go back to the heat map thing, you will notice that some of the campuses that were marked need for campuses right now are not listed. That is because those are our critical places where space is a major issue. So just things for us to work around right now as we move forward. And then to wrap all this up, let's talk cost. Because I did tell you that, remember, it's only funded half-day, but mandated full day for 4, and pre-K is only funded three-day, or half-day. So each section estimated staff cost for a paraprofessional and a professional is about $101,000, $102,000. And for all 16 new sections, you're looking at 1.6 for professional and paraprofessional personnel in those classrooms. Then you need to add your instructional materials and furniture, keeping in mind that it costs more to instructionally outfit a bilingual classroom because we order all things in English and Spanish so that we can get that cross-linguistic connection. And so overall, to do all 16 classrooms, we are looking at a little under $2 million. The other piece of data I want to give you is the ADA funding. So I've got year one highlighted there. This is what Commit has used basic numbers to come up with. But if you see in year one, if you take what we're estimating to cost, what our estimated ADA could be, we would be a little over $1 million in that we would need to make this happen. So. Any questions? Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
As well as staff? Is that correct?
Space Limited. I have been meeting with personnel, and as soon as we know what we're going to do, we're going to hit the ground running. The state has upped the qualifications for a pre-K teacher. They are more stringent than they were.
And they didn't fund that?
Part-time.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
You talked about doing odd years because of legislation. Have we sat down with any of the legislators, both the House and the Senate, to help draft bills on what's needed?
Commit is doing that for us at this moment. We can join them. They are willing to help and get involved with us, so.
I think that would be good. Once we have that information, we need to sit down with our, all those representatives of Mesquite ISD to push that through and show them what the cost is, why we can't get where we need to be, especially 100%.
Absolutely.
And part of that's building cost. The other part's staff and materials.
Well, and when you're not funded 100% for a program that's, again, you just heard Christie say unfunded mandate. This is a similar situation.
So if Mr. Don Poole would stop spending so much money, we might have some.
True.
Dr. Hammond?
So.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Dr. Hammond, on a new section, would a section consist of 22 students?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The ratio for pre-K is 11 to 1. So that's why it has a professional teacher and a paraprofessional in it. So we meet ratios.
Just off the top, you had a weak geographic, he spread out too well throughout the district, so roughly neighborhood. Coverage for families to get their kid to a pre-K, that would be fairly close?
Fairly close right now. What we are working on are the areas where we have the greatest need, where there are a lot of eligible students, but we don't have the space on their campuses.
Okay.
The goal at 100% is to definitely have every, and every bilingual student go into their home campus and every pre-K student go into their home campus.
I appreciate you saying how important this program is. You know, for those that are listening, I can't emphasize having your child in a pre-K program if you are eligible.
Yes.
It really makes a difference. It really does.
And it would be really nice at 100% to be able to offer.
I know it. Wouldn't it?
The paid positions too, as well for families who would like that.
Well, thank you.
No, thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it very much. Very good. Yes. Okay. Mr. Poole, you're on.
I just want to give Mr. Poole a compliment for his attire.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you do. You look very nice.
Gary already did it for me. Of course, he doesn't have a tie on. Well, thank you, School Board, Madam President, Dr. Rivera. We're here tonight to discuss the GMP for Gentry Elementary, GMP 1. WRA Architects, Lee Lewis Construction, and MISD Construction Services recommend the approval of Gentry Elementary Edition release of package GMP 1 in the amount of $854,418 for the playground as submitted by Lee Lewis Construction, the construction manager at risk. The total construction cost at this time is 90% plans, is looking like $14,997,000 for the Gentry Elementary Edition.
Mercy.
I have here tonight with me from WRA Architects, Roland Gentry, from Lee Lewis Construction, Taylor Morris, myself, and from MISD, also Darcy Hooton from the purchasing department. She's just here for fun.
This is a.
This has got to be built playing the playground.
So part, I mean, part of this whole thing is, you know, getting set up, which is actually